I've got seven o'clock sharp, we'll bring a meeting to order. At this time, would you call the role of the city councilman, Ms. James?
Honorable Mayor Pro Tim Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson. Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hudson will be joining us today via Zoom, she's out of the jurisdiction and they will let me know when she's on.
Okay, that's fine. Bear in mind, the can please stand for my indication.
If you would please let us bow. Father, the gift that is coming for you, put our heads about and our hearts hum. Have a grateful blessing this evening. Father, as we are marked upon this another city council meeting, we ask your blessings on all that is said and done in the course of this evening. While we come on behalf of all our first responders and our essential workers, asking that you put your arms of protection around them. We pray on behalf of our elected leaders, Father, help them as they serve the citizens of this city. Crown their heads with wisdom and allow them to conduct the affairs of the business of this city in a way that is pleasing and acceptable to you. Father, be with all of our residents and help the city to continue to grow and to serve them in a way that is beneficial to all who live within the city area. And Father, bless our staff as they work each day to provide the services and to deliver to our citizens that which they need. While all of this, we ask, in your son's holy precious name, with all the degree said, amen.
Amen.
And to the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of council, can I entertain a motion to adopt the city council agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. At this time, we'll go to our public comment. Do we have any speakers, Ms. James?
We have two.
Okay, so thirty minutes shall be available for public comment. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker shall be able to speak for more than six minutes. Excuse me. All issues raised at the time are generally referred to the city administrator for a review. Responses will be provided at a later date. Please call our first speaker.
Our speaker is Mr. Ernie Brooks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What I'm gonna say tonight may offend someone, I'm just gonna say it. I don't have a hidden agenda, I don't have any ambition to be on the kiosk. But I do have a health condition, it's called OCD. And for whatever reason, things kind of stick out, and it wasn't that long ago that over here on Roberts Road, we had a company come in. And they deal with hazardous waste. And that attorney who represented that company told this council that there were no residential homes on Roberts Road. And just for a minute, ride with me from the police station, we cross over twenty-nine. We cross over the railroad track. On the left is First Baptist Church property. On the right is Harvest Rain. We go around the curb, there's houses on the left, and here's Roberts Road. We hang a ride on Roberts Road, and there's a Baptist church there on the left. And three residential houses that sit laterally. There's also two signs there that say, no three-wheel vehicle trucks. One on the side coming and one on the other side going. Those need to be removed because they got three-wheel vehicles. And so anyway, what I'm saying is, these small things bother me. And also, the sign that was dedicated to Mother Frankie Arnold. I worked with her grandson Julius Arnold. And to me, when you look at the sign, that's the first sign when you turn before you go under the underpass. Look to the left and you'll see all the debris going up the steps to what used to be Casablanca, that's soon to be the Biscuit Restaurant. If you look to the right, the restaurant that used to be, uh...
Armando's.
Armando's, thank you, thank you. If you look, there's railroad ties that are decayed and collapsed. And it just seems to me that when they built the parking lot on the other side of the railroad track, they could have kind of straightened up that area. It looks bad. And if we're gonna have people that we're trying to attract to Fairburn, we can do some minor things, like some things that just stick out in my mind. And so, thank you for letting me vent, and I don't have time to share a story with you, so I'll move on so the next speaker can be in your ear. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Next speaker.
Ms. Vera Ragland. Hi, my name is Vera Ragland, my address is five nine three Sir Charles here in Fairburn. And I want to talk about the advancement that the city is making in so many areas. I mean, I think that we're being very progressive in the council and its department of the city. You're doing a great job. But now, because I live in an older community, I want to bring this up. Whispering Pines, only three streets. Most of those homes are fully brick homes, and the values go from two-thirty up to almost four-hundred thousand dollars. Just within last several years, we've been plagued with people, they're older residents, they're dying off, they're going to nursing homes. Families are selling those properties, and sometimes they end up in the home, in the hands of investors. But what has happened, this last June, this past month, we were constantly in touch with planning zone. And Mrs. Brookins has done a great job in helping our community out. But we have some new owners and some renters who now have goats. They have roosters along with their chickens. The goats are wandering across the street, going into other people's yards. And I did not know this until a neighbor told me that when the goats are mating, you do get this loud sound any time of night, any time of early morning. Just as we have a noise ordinance for the rooster, now we need to have one for goats. All I'm saying is that it's time to go back and review some of those ordinances. One of the things I'd like to have reviewed is how you treat the landlords of those properties. I hate to see Fairburn on the old side become no more than rent houses and slums. You're talking about bringing people in to dress up downtown and also expanding economic development. When they come in here, as Mr. Brooks is saying, you can't have part of the town falling apart. It's obvious when the landscaping and all the homes are not well-kept. The code enforcement, they came several times, they worked with us several times, and trying to address these things. There's a house next to me, six oh three Sir Charles, where the backyard has become a jungle. I have never had a snake come in my yard before. There was a snake in my garage yesterday. In talking to the neighbors, I found out there was a snake in somebody's driveway. This lady has a grandchild. The snake was making its way, a second snake, into her screened-in porch where the child plays. That house now has grass that has become shrubbery. The vines are coming under my privacy fence, the limbs are hanging over my privacy fence. When code came, they cut the front yard, they did not cut the back. That house also has vicious dogs. Well, now the dogs have been kept inside, but just two days ago, the dogs were outside.
In seconds.
Without any owner being present. I know I have a few minutes. Please think about making this city grow all over and attending to these things.
Thank you so much for your comment.
I wonder if I could be allowed an extension, is that possible, since there are no other speakers?
No ma'am, unfortunately, there was no one else to give you any time, I'm sorry. And so, in this case, members of council will come next to our approval of city council minutes. You have the city council minutes before you commence during May the thirty of twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made in properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And motion carries. You have the city council meeting that commits for the city council retreat from May the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made in properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And motion carries. You have the city council meeting that commits during June the ninth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. For one second, I want to make sure. I'm sorry, I wanted to make, did you?
Okay, Councilwoman Hudson is on.
Okay, got you. Members of council, you have before you the agenda, the printed agenda, number two through ten. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You've already adopted the agenda, so we're at the first regular agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is appointment of Vera Ragland to the Board of Appeals. The recommendation that Mayor Avery would like to appoint Vera Ragland to the Board of Appeals. This appointment is to complete the term of Rosalyn Williams and will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is intergovernment agreement with Fulton County for the twenty twenty-five election. This is a request for mayor and council approval of intergovernment agreement for the provision of election services between Fulton County and the city of Fairburn in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Members of council, you have before you intergovernment agreement with Fulton County government for the twenty twenty-two-five election. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments by council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. The next item.
Next item is the Consumer Price Index, which is a rate increase request from Advanced Disposal during business as Georgia Waste System. It is a request for mayor and council approval of the request from Advanced Disposal for a rate increase from two-point-four to four percent effective June first, twenty twenty-five for commercial solid waste and recycling services provided June first, twenty twenty-five through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Go ahead, Ms. Chris, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, Mr. Allen Owens, who is the Public Sector Manager with Advanced Disposal, is coming before you with this request. In accordance with Section Five Compensation, specifically five-point-three, the rate adjustment is due to significant changes. Once each year, the contractor may petition to adjust its rate upward or downward to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index that have occurred during the preceding twelve months. However, the CPI increase may not exceed four percent in any one year. Advanced Disposal provided a letter to the city of Fairburn on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five asking to increase the rate from the two-point-four percent to the max percentage of four effective during the time period of June one, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And so, at this time, I'll allow Mr. Owens to come forth with this request and to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Administrator. As to Ms. Chris's point, I'm here today to answer any questions. The first thing, just talking to Councilwoman Hattis Jones, give kind of an explanation, right, of when companies acquire other companies, just to give you all kind of a clarification of Advanced Disposal slash Waste Management, WM, we acquired them in twenty-twenty. So when you hear Advanced Disposal, that really is Waste Management, and we do all of the commercial work within the city of Fairburn. I know sometimes there's some questions on, hey, my constituents are asking about residential service. We don't handle that in the city. We do have residential service throughout the country and in some parts of the Atlanta metro area. But for the city of Fairburn, we do not handle residential service. The reason why we're asking for the slight increase is because of the Consumer Price Index. Right now, the Water, Sewer, and Trash Index is actually five-point-five percent. City Administrator did a great job of maximizing or capping the maximum we can get. So, so often, probably the last three years, you normally see me come up and ask for that maximum, which benefits actually the city because it provides that fee that goes to the consumer, commercial customers, to the city and the franchise fee. So at this time, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
What I'm gonna do is bring the item to the floor, and I'll ask, open the door for council members to ask some questions you can stand to make. Members of council, you have before you a Consumer Price Index, Increase Request from Advanced Disposal during business as Georgia Waste Systems, LSC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
So, you're asking for what amount, what percentage?
The four percent.
So you are asking for the four specifically. Okay, could you talk a little bit about the, what you stated, the Water, Sewer, Trash Index? What goes into that and why is it at five percent? And why is it that you ask for increase based on CPI and not the Water, Sewer, Trash Index? I'm not advocating that, I'm just trying to get clarity on that index, because I'm not familiar with it.
Great question, Councilwoman. So because there are a Consumer Price Index for every kind of commodity, for the city of Fairburn, that is a kind of a urban cause. Where we fit in as a waste hauler, we fit in kind of to the water, sewer, and trash is our industry. So when there are increases in disposal, when you take them to a transfer station or a landfill, or actually even operational. So when we invest in new equipment that you may see around the street, CNG technology, smart truck technology, that's what we look at, the CPI index for WST, Water, Sewer, and Trash. We don't really look at the CPI for urban. So that's the difference of urban encompasses everything, the WST, Water, Sewer, and Trash factors in for what we do in disposing of that, that waste.
And is that why you're asking for four percent and not two-point-four percent?
Yeah, we're asking for that increase because of the increase in disposal cost, which again, kind of affects that CPI for WST. That's why it's higher than the normal max at the five-point-five.
And again, it is for commercial only?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hudson, I know Ms. Hudson had a question. Ms. Hudson, you got any questions? Okay, okay. Any other members of council, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Cleared up one question I had. I wanted to be specific as to commercial as relates to residential, so, you know, okay, great. With this other index that you're talking about, you gave us a copy of the CPI rates. Why, do you have a copy of the other rates that you are adding to? And the reason I'm asking for that is, when you're looking at the CPI, do you go from the rates that you started to the rate at the end of the year, and you do an aggregate, you do a composite of all those rates? How do you get to what to increase? This is what I need, how did you get to four percent?
So, good question. So it was negotiated through the contract that four was the max. We would like to, we would like to go to a WST.
No, 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 I, no.
But he can't, I'm explaining.
No, 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 that's, that's not the answer.
Councilwoman Davis, if I could, this, this may help, I hope it helps. In that particular section of the contract that we negotiated, there are actually three specific things that the contract allows them to petition for an increase. One is the CPI, which we've talked about. The other two are any changes in governmental laws, ordinances, regulations, assessments, or disposal fees. That's the second one. And the last one is extraordinary fuel rate increases. So any of those three categories or any combination thereof are the areas that allow them to say, we want to petition for the four percent. And as Mr. Owens correctly stated, we cap that at four percent because we know those other indexes can frequently exceed four percent. And also, I would mention that this is an industry standard. I don't know that we've had, when we had GFL previously, we have Am Waste Now for residential, we have Advanced Disposal for commercial. And if you look at most cities, this is a standard provision in waste disposal contracts, this CPI, and the other two that I mentioned. And so, it's a fairly standard stipulation, and any of those three, the CPI, governmental or disposal fee increases, or fuel increases, any of those three in combination are the provisions that allow them to come before you this evening and say, we'd like to go from two-point-four to four percent if approved by council.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
And you asked about the kind of the average, right? How do we come up with it? Well, that's a government kind of twelve-month average, so every month, it can fluctuate. It can go from two-point-four to five percent.
Is this a CPI you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the CPU that can fluctuate as well. So if you've seen over the, I kind of put the ten-year calendar in there, it's gone as high as eight-point-five to, in March, it's two-point-four. And we only use the March category and not kind of choosing, well, it's higher if I use the October version. We always, per the contract, use the March calendar for that year, for that previous.
Any other members, any other members of council, question?
Why March? Why March?
Because the contract.
Was.
So you go back that ninety days.
Thank you, ninety days.
Seeing no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item.
The next item is the Ferndale Phase Two Final Platte. It's a request for mayor and council approval of the final platte for Phase Two of the Ferndale subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The item before you is a final platte. We have copies, large copies if anyone needs one. The item was approved, or the rezoning for the item was approved in twenty nineteen. The applicant has completed all the requirements in terms of infrastructure, submitting the ASBILTS. All of our various departments have had an opportunity to review and are recommending approval of the final platte. The applicant is here and available to answer any questions.
Would the applicant say anything first about it before I bring it to the floor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Richard Ferry. I'm with Fairburn VBS seventy-five LLC. Thank you, Ms. Brookins, for introducing me. We have, we have, we have a total of a hundred and seventy-one single-family lots that were approved back in two thousand nineteen. We completed Phase One in twenty twenty-three and have since sold all the lots and Dream Finder Homes has built out the homes. And now we've moved into Phase Two, which are forty-six lots in that, in that phase. And we're requesting signature and approval of that final platte. Here to take any questions, if you have any.
And let me do that, let me bring the item to the floor, and then any members of council has a question, we can go from there. Members of council, you have before you the Ferndale Phase Two Final Platte. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments by any members of council?
I got one.
Start with Ms. Jones, then, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, are they gonna be the exact same style homes, or will this phase be different as?
It'll be generally the same, same style. The company originally was Liberty Communities. They went through a change in, in, I think, earlier twenty twenty-five, where Dream Finders Home bought them out. I hadn't seen a lot of change in those homes, but, but I believe that there are some interior and other trim work that they have opportunities to make, opportunities for the customers to choose from.
And also, with this first phase, is it pretty much all bought out?
Yes, sir.
Because, I'll yield after this, but what happened this weekend, it seemed like every, every street was full over there this weekend. Was it like an open house or something?
I don't know that, that answer. I'm really excited to hear that, though.
I'm like.
Can we do that every weekend?
It seemed like it was something big going on, I guess, trying to get the homes.
What I've heard about Dream Finders is they are, since they've taken over at Liberty, they're, they're going in, they're doing exactly that in some communities. And that might have been that time for Ferndale.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, though. Thank you.
It was big.
That's great.
I'll go to Ms. Jones, then Mr. Whitmore, and I believe I heard.
I was gonna ask a similar question as well. But could you talk a little bit about the difference between the Phase One and the Phase Two? Is it lot size, is it?
I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Talk about the difference.
This is right, right in my ballpark, so the question that Councilman Smallwood asked is, is much more focused on, on the home construction and the sales. Ours is the construction side of the infrastructure. In Phase One, there were certain ridgelines and, and basins that went to certain ponds that allowed for a certain number of homes to be built. As we went from Phase One to Phase Two, our goal is to not go out and inundate the, the homes with, or inundate the community with a lot of lots. If you remember, that's what it was like back in a bad year of two thousand seven, eight, where they would build a lot of lots and, and then just allow the, the homes to be absorbed. We are much more calculated now in our, in our plan of breaking down the phases. So this community of a hundred and seventy-one, it was originally that, that first group of seventy. And now we have the, the two remaining, the last hundred or so lots. We broke that into two phases just to allow absorption to come along with that project. It has nothing to do with the lot sizes or, or the type of homes. It's more about the, where the, where the water and the stormwater and the sewer make sense.
And I had a company in over the holiday, and they've been former visitors to the Fairburn area. So they were really shocked to see the development that was going on. And several went in to just, you know, observe the community and see the type of housing, and they had a chance to talk to the realtor. So my question to you is, it is my understanding, though, that there... that there are very few ranch homes that are being built. Could you talk a little bit about that? Why that decision, especially given the demographic trends that we've been hearing, you know, about, you know, the aging population and the need for more ranch-style homes?
That, that's, that's a great question. I, I wish I had someone from Dream Finders here to communicate, to communicate more of that. But the, the desire of the, of this community was not necessarily for an age-restricted or age-targeted development. We were looking for a family-style development. And this two-story home does provide that, that, that number of bedrooms that are desired for a larger, for a family to go in there and have a bigger house.
Many of them would then have bedrooms on the first floor, then?
They, they do have a model that has a bedroom on the first floor. I don't think that's the standard, though.
I see.
Yes. If, if the opportunity, since Dream Finders came over, we do have more product, which would allow for that should a, a resident come in and desire that.
Well, that's fantastic. Obviously, the market is saying something different, given that you've sold, you know, all the lots in Phase One. So, congratulations with that.
Very pleased with the community.
Yeah.
Mr. Whitmore?
Thank you, mayor. Sorry, good evening to you.
Yes, sir, thank you. How are you?
Based on my colleague, Mr. Smallwood's comments, and I know you, you were happy to hear that.
I was.
And also, apparently, Phase One is going quite well.
Yes, sir.
Drive that way quite frequently myself. And when do you anticipate having Phase Two completed and starting Phase Three?
It, I would say we're probably going to start later this fall. To have to go into Phase Three, but what, there's a weird little trend we're in right now in, in the housing market. It's hard to say exactly what's going to happen as we look, as we look to the remainder of the summer and the early fall. The, the Fed chose not to lower the interest rate in, in the June meetings. Oddly enough, at the same time, the consumer interest rate was indeed dropping. And so, I'm not faulting that, I'm not, not saying it was right or wrong. I'm clearly not a fiscal, I'm not involved in fiscal policy at all. But I, we, what we're, what we were hoping for in June with that drop would come and we would start immediately. Since that drop didn't come, although the community is doing well, the absorption should remain on the same level, which would put us in fall to get started on Phase Three.
Okay. Now, I know you're doing quite well, and you're hitting your benchmarks.
We're hitting our benchmarks, yes, sir.
That's great. Now, I can say, I did not catch it, nor did the rest of this council catch the Brooks Drive issue. When you initially came before, it's back in.
Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir.
So, obviously, that's not a very popular subject for me as a councilman. That one slipped through. And I'm assuming that there's no other streets that we should be concerned about. Is that correct, Ms.?
No, sir. Mr. Thompson and his entire team, including our transportation engineers, had an opportunity to review and approve, and they did not have any concerns regarding the streets or the infrastructure improvements that were required as a part of the development.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, I have a ask.
Okay.
I would ask that you and your team go back to our administration department and let's have a real frank conversation.
Okay.
Because the expectation was that Brooks was going to be taken all the way out. So, now, you would have a secondary entrance and exit. That's not happening now. Because we didn't catch it, because I didn't catch it. I'll put it on me.
Okay.
All right? But I still, still think we have an opportunity to find some common ground. It's not too late. You still have two more phases that you need to take care of, but may not be able to do anything about Brooks. But we have other opportunities for you within the city of Fairburn that will benefit both parks and recs with our master plan.
Okay.
So, I'm going to encourage you to immediately have a conversation with our city administrator. And let's see what we can work out. Because this is a major piece that the city has to absorb now, because we didn't catch it. All right? And I'm sure you're aware of it.
I am very aware of it, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I regret that that happened. It was never our intention to show that connection, going all the way up to Highway 29, which came to our attention about two-thirds of the way of, after, of, in construction of Phase One. But I'd be happy to get together with Mr. Phillips and, and talk about some opportunities.
I appreciate your willingness to do so.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to sit very anxiously awaiting for some positive results from that conversation in reference to us finding some common ground. Especially, you have two more phases to go, this one and the next one.
Yes, sir.
And again, you have already verbally demonstrated the success of Phase One. And as I drive through, I like what I see.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure Phase Two and Phase Two will be, Two and Three will be about the same.
Hope they do. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Hudson?
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Hudson wants to know what infrastructure improvements have occurred thus far and what is planned moving forward.
Okay.
Inside the neighborhood or external?
Do both. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Brooks.
Great question. A developer doing business in the city of Fairburn is responsible for putting in all water sewer extensions, road improvements. All of those items are then reviewed prior to any construction moving. So, every developer has to submit civil plans, hydrology. Then, after that, everything is constructed and reviewed by our team to ensure that it complies. That includes water sewer, roads, streetlights. Our utility department is also a part of that. So, there's a, a pretty significant amount of infrastructure improvements that are required of any developer. And this developer has provided all of the requirements per the ordinance that was approved in 2019 and the ASBILs that are reviewed by our various departments.
Any other members of council? I have one question. Actually, what happened, Mr. Whitmore actually took the question or the inquiry that I was going to make. If you remember, I actually made this inquiry at my inaugural address. Excuse me, I made this inquiry at my inaugural address about Ferndale and the, and Brooks Drive. And so, again, I'm just looking, thanks again for being open with two more phases to go to see basically how we move forward. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr., go ahead, sir, go ahead.
My question, it's just two. Are you going to have underground cable, like power cables for that subdivision? What is the price range of the homes?
Indeed, we do have all the power installed. The city, the city, we, we paid the city to install the, all the power. The, the price point, I think we're, are we in the high threes, low fours? We're in that ballpark.
High threes, low fours, yeah, thank you.
Another, another question, council. Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a resolution to accept and authorize the in-kind demolition services by DRB Group. It is a request for mayor and council to approve the resolution to accept the in-kind demolition services of private development firm for the demolition of a city-owned public structure and to acquire all necessary permits and proceed with the demolition of the vacant city-owned property located at 6760 Johnson Road.
Hello again.
Hello.
The item before you is a request from the DRB Group. They contacted our staff and asked if they could provide a service to the city. As you know, that they are constructing the Curry Bend Development. So, this area is right adjacent to their development. So, they requested to provide the service of demoing the building. The property is located at 6760 Johnson Road, historically known as the Far Best Community Center, and it was originally owned by Fulton County. On August 16, 2017, the county transferred the parcel to the city of Fairburn through a quitclaim deed. As a part of the transfer, there was a restrictive covenant placed on the property, which mandate that, that the land be used exclusively for public or ag use. This is not transferring ownership or anything. This is just a request to demo it. As you can see, the property is somewhat of an eyesore. It has received attention from people trying to get in it. It is the entrance to the Ashbury Park, which is an established neighborhood in the city. Those neighbors have contacted us with complaints regarding it and asking what could be done to improve that area. They've asked for things like parks or some sort of like amenity space. And that would be a great opportunity that is in line with the restrictions on the property. So, those are some very recent pictures of what it looks like today. And again, that's where the Curry Bend proposed development is and the existing neighborhood that this is the entrance to. Staff is recommending approval of that request. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer questions or provide any clarity.
We'll bring the item to the floor and then, any members of council. Members of council, you have before you item number six, a resolution to accept and authorize the in-kind demolition service by DRB Group. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments by council? Mr. Whitmore?
Oh, thank you, mayor. Right now, do you know of any plans for that piece of property? Which is, how many acres is that total?
Let's see, I believe it is, is it under an acre? About an acre or so.
About an acre? Okay.
At present, no, there are no plans for it. But I do think one critical piece, because of the location and its proximity to the residential community, I think it's really important that as a part of the process, we maybe do some community meetings to make sure we have a clear idea of what those folks want to see happen, because this would impact them directly. They have to see that as they come in every single day. So, I think it's important to do some sort of boots-on-the-ground, hand-in-hand community workshops to figure out exactly what they need. And also, look at some of our needs in terms of expanding the park's master plan. So, there's a great opportunity there.
And, and I, I agree with you, number one. Just looking at your pictures, for me, it's a safety issue. I mean, it's deplorable. And for it to get to that, that state, it's really sad, especially since, you know, that we own it. Now, of course, I know that we got it from Fulton County. And I know that once we received it from Fulton County, come to find out, all the wires and everything was stripped out of there. All right? So, it was going to cost a lot of money just to renovate and bring it up to code and make it usable. But I know that, I just don't want to see Ashbury Park disappointed yet again. All right? Because there were promises even, I believe, mayor, with your previous administration, where we talked about basketball fence and everything else. Then, we went into the previous administration, okay? And then, COVID hit. All right? And now, we're at the tail end of another administration, and we finally at this point. But for me, the key is, with that master plan, what is it that we can do as a city to provide some sort of services over there to the Ashbury Park area in reference to fence, basketball court, public gathering place, et cetera, et cetera, and et cetera.
So, Councilman Whitmore, both specific instances, the park's master plan has already identified that area as a potential location for an additional park. So, that's in the park's master plan. And as you know, we completed and invested quite a bit in that. I do also know in conversation with Chief Robinson and with Mr. Smith, that we've also looked at the possibility of co-locating the next fire station in that area along with a pocket park. Although, we depended on council approval and funding opportunities, but that area was examined through the park's master plan process. And as you know, that process had public input, identify that as a prospective area. And so, we understand the need and we've got roadmaps ahead to figure out how to put a positive asset there. This effort is to get rid of the dilapidated facility that's there now. But we've also invested in figuring out what needs to happen next.
Agreed, 100% agree with you. And again, I think that, well, I'm not sure when the last communication has been, has taken place with that community. But I know for a fact, they are eager to sit down and talk and share their thoughts and their plans. And the city, I'm sure, should be willing to even share that about the fire station and gathering place with the new development that's getting ready to come out there, Curry Bend. It's especially important that we do not only the demolition, but the prep for the next phase of whatever it is that we're going to do. So, I'm looking forward to hearing what we're going to do post-demolition. Yes, ma'am.
I think you make an excellent point, councilman. As a part of this request in Curry Bend and considering its proximity to that residential community, early on, we did work with an organization called Live Work. They are a pretty well-known architectural firm, so they have some concepts. But before bringing that to the community or having any conversations, we wanted to make sure that this opportunity was put in front of council. And if you are all okay with it and the demolition, we would then start that conversation and be able to bring something to the community that could then be modified. Because I think it's important not just to have the conversation, but come with something so that they can get their imaginations going.
Well, I would also add that having a conversation with the development of Curry Bend, and this is going back before your time, but I do know that Curry Bend was willing to do a lot of this that we're talking about. And all of a sudden, things changed, COVID and everything else. And now, that's no longer in their plans. All right? So, it's, it's our property, and to ensure that we're doing what's right for that community. And again, Mr. City Administrator had already addressed future park plan and possibility of a firehouse and a gathering place and whatever else, basketball court, da-da-da, you know. This is the time for us to have that conversation, very serious conversation. That is the furthest point that we have in the city of Fairburn with nothing to show except for Ashbury Park. Thank you.
Any other members of council?
Yes, sir. I, I agree with my colleague that it is an area that needs a lot of our attention. And I was happy to know that it was part of the park's master plan and the ideas that came out of that. I'm even more excited about this joint venture, partnership, whatever you want to call it, with the developer to demolish the property on our behalf. I think it is also an opportunity for us to have a serious conversation about what we can do together now to put in place, you know, some, the ideas of the park's master plan that, since they are, they're, they're ready to build, we should have a conversation about how we can work together too, because that subdivision would benefit from whatever was there as well. So, let's take advantage of that opportunity. And I echo my colleague, and I look forward to seeing, you know, what ideas come out of that and to hearing from the developer about how they are willing to participate with us. One last question. What's, what's the cost of the demolition?
For the city of Fairburn?
Yes.
Dollars?
Zero dollars.
It's an in-kind donation.
Okay, fantastic. Even more exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The question is, why did the property go without being managed since it is city-owned assets?
So, I, though I cannot speak to the previous history that Council Whitmore has already detailed, once this administration came in place, we began evaluating how best to move forward. That's why it was included. Now, the property itself, and I don't want to be repetitive because Councilwoman Whitmore, I believe, touched on this. The cost to try to do something with that property exceeded the value of the property. And so, it was not a realistic financial consideration to try to fix it up or to make something useful out of it. And we did look at that. That's why we went in the direction of utilizing that space as part of the park's master plan and also the conversations that Ms. Brookins has managed. So, there was nothing there to manage. We needed to move forward, figure out how to get rid of the property that's there, because I don't know the age of the building, but I would imagine it is 40, 50, 60 years old. And so, we focused more on what needs to happen moving forward as opposed to trying to manage a dilapidated, outdated facility. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
So, there's a lot of back history there. So, there's a lot of back history there.
A lot.
A lot of back history, all right? And when we did receive that from Fulton County, that was something that they never wanted. So they got rid of it. That's the bottom line. And, and the thing is, after we received it and the condition that would, that it was in, it just didn't make any sense, as you already fore stated, to invest any money in it. So, but we're not going to think about everything that's behind us. What I'm willing to do, along with, I, I believe, my colleagues up here, is look at the possibilities moving forward. And that's, that's my, that's my benchmark in looking forward and, and wanting to see some great things done. And it shall be, that's what I believe.
And I agree with you, Councilman Whitmore, thank you for that. We are focused on that as well moving forward. But I do, from not a Fairburne perspective, but during my time with Fulton County, one of the departments I was in, that property was part of that department. It had not been managed by the county for years prior to it coming to Fairburne. The county had quit programming that facility, quit maintaining that facility for years plural before it was transacted to the county. So it had been in a dilapidated condition for an extended period of time. But I, like you, believe our best focus is forward and figuring out how we could create a positive outcome at that property for Asbury Park who's needed it for some time, thank you for mentioning that. But we also have Curry Bend coming on board and there's a conversation to be had there.
My question was going to be, because again, this was brought up, uh, soon as I came on it. Because again, Mr. Whitmore was running the money, it relates to the condition that the building was in when we acquired it, was just deplorable, just, just to be as frank as I can be with it. The question I was going to be, I remember when we, when we were talking about the Park's Master Plan, for acre-sized lot versus, I guess my question is just different, passive parks, different types of parks. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Phillips, you being a park expert, might be better suited to answer this question. So, what's it's going to be if the community, in this case, decides that's what we want in, in conjunction with the joint venture? Give me, give me realistically what type of park we're talking about because of the acreage of the land.
Absolutely, and you made a very good point, Mayor, in that typically because we have such an amazing flagship park in Duncan Park, that is the first thing people think of when you think of a park. But parks are very diverse. And so what would likely be a good consideration of that location? I think the Park's Master Plan references is, is what I would refer to as a pocket park. They're typically smaller footprints, but still have some amenities and become an active positive space. If it's able to be co-located with a fire station and a future consideration, that could add even more amenities to that area. But pocket parks are typically smaller footprints that are passive in nature. This is not somewhere where you're playing baseball or something of that nature. You can have some amenities there, but it would fit in the overall, um, culture of that area as you have Asbury Park existing, Curry Bend coming on. If there's a nice place for you to enjoy nature, for you to have a small walking trail, things of that nature fit well in a pocket park. It's not necessarily an active park, it is more of a passive park, but it's still a positive asset for that community.
One last thing.
Ms. Brooky had a comment, and then I'll come back to it.
So we did have a landscape architect look at it and the space, the way it exists currently, has sufficient room for a public safety facility, maybe a walking trail, a gazebo. So it's not nearly as large as Duncan Park, but it's sufficient to have quite a few amenities on site. And if it's the will of council at a later date, we can show you what the possibilities are.
Ms. Jones, and then I'll come to Mr. Whitmore again.
So, do we know what, um, the, the developer has in mind for park amenities? We tend to request that as part of subdivision development, whatever that might be. Let's not duplicate, let's try to, um, um, complement, uh, what, what we do with what it is that they're doing. So again, in, in your conversation with them, sharing this idea, um, the possibilities that are there and having some thought about what it is that they're doing. Uh, and maybe they can revise or tweak, or we can revise and, uh, so that they complement each other. Okay, thank you.
Whitmore?
If I may, that's my colleague, uh, Ms. Portis Jones, uh, in your last statement and asking what the, um, new development is going to be like. But you, you're aware that that conversation is long gone. But I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is that based on what they're doing and what we can potentially do, looking at everything together to match up?
Uh, yeah, yes, um, but I don't believe that, that, that the conversation is long gone. I believe that, you know, that's a conversation to be had, um, and, um, we can work together and figure those things out. So I'd, I'd say, let's open the door, have the discussion, see what we can and can't do, what the possibilities are. Because I believe the developer would gladly, um, work with us if we're complementing, you know, their subdivision with, um, an amenity that's right across the street.
And Curry Bend is scheduled to start when, ma'am?
Curry Bend is still under review, the civil plans, I believe, have not yet been approved, but I can check with Mr. Thompson.
Okay, so that, 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 there's two things there, uh, uh, Mr. City Administrator. The possibility of renewing conversation with and, I don't know about anything else, but that'd be your job to figure that out.
Yes, sir.
Then on top of that, and, and looking at what could happen there as a pocket park. I mean, we've seen renderings for Citizens Park, all right? And that area is probably about the same acreage, maybe less. But there's something that can come out of that that can be both, uh, approval and eye-cutting for everyone concerned.
Very good suggestion. And again, we will go back and refresh and just review what our, uh, experts came up with in part of that community conversation, as part of the Park's Master Plan. There's a concept for that area as part of the Park's Master Plan. So we're not starting from scratch necessarily, uh, how we navigate that and funding the Park's Master Plan and the various things that we've discussed is the conversation we'd like to have with council. And then pulling in those partners like Curry Bend, the developer that Ms. Brookins mentioned, to be a part of that funding formula or collaborative solution. But there's a starting point already embedded in the Park's Master Plan.
And finally, I would say, any money out there that we can find, sir? I don't know if we still have someone that's writing grants or anything else, but anything that we can find recreationally speaking, it'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Any other members of council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and motion carries.
The next item is a modification of the intergovernment agreement between the city of Fairburne and the city of Union City for artwork installation at CSX overpass on State Route 138.
Greetings, the item before you is a slight modification to the agreement that was approved. We, uh, sent the agreement to Union City because Fairburne's procurement department is really taking the lead. They asked for a slight modification. Instead of stating, uh, Union City will, um, monitor the contract, they're asking that it state the city of Fairburne because our procurement department will be leading the charge.
Okay, members of council, you have before you a modification in the government agreement between the city of Fairburne and Union City for artwork installation at CSX overpass on Route, State, uh, State Route 138. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and properly said, any questions or comments about council? Seeing, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, next item.
The next item is a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning applications for multifamily residential use Highway 74 overlay district.
Okay, I think the screen, it went down for a second. But the item before you is a request for a moratorium, it was discussed previously. We are seeking a moratorium, this is not citywide, does not impact all parcels. But we want to take a moment while we don't have any active applications on the Highway 74 overlay district and take a moment to really modify, to critique and make some necessary updates. It's really important that as we, you know, continue the growth that we make the most to really leverage the different opportunities that we've had. So this is not citywide, this is simply to look at the Highway 74 overlay district and make some tweaks to the language, especially as it relates to plan development. And, uh, as you, well, uh, know, we had the housing study that was completed. It provided us with a lot of good information about sort of the needs of the community. This is a brief map that kind of shows the, uh, parcels that would be impacted.
Members of council, you have before you a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning application for multifamily residential use on Highway 74 overlay district, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments by members of council?
Mr. Smallwood, councilman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smallwood.
The second?
Yes, he did.
Oh, he made the second.
He made the second.
He made the motion.
Miss Davis?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, second. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but any members of council has a comment about this?
Um, I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How do we classify, is, um, Fairburne industrial to the south, I guess? Is that part of the overlay or does the overlay stop at, um, um, the interstate?
Oh, no, it continues all the way from Broad and Fairburne Industrial Boulevard and continues all the way to the edge of the city limits where you cross over into Fayette County.
Okay, to the west. That's to the east, to the west. To the south? To the south. The ramp to 29? Fairburne Industrial this way?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you're sort of...
Does that include, does that include the overlay district?
Yes, some of the parcels are included, yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, I wasn't, uh, it's the broad street that's throwing me. Okay, thank you.
Any other members of council with a question? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries.
The next item is a ratification of emergency roof replacement task order for Fairburne Fire Station. This is a request for mayor and council approval to ratify the emergency tax, task order with Roof Technology Partners to replace the roof at the city of Fairburne Station number 21 in an amount not to exceed $75,400.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Pursuant to the, uh, purchasing policy, when there comes an immediate need due to, uh, uh, threat, safety concern, public health to the welfare, the welfare of the citizens or our staff or the structural integrity of a building, that allows, um, city administration to procure items in an emergency sense. And so we did this in this juncture with the roof replacement at Station 21. Due to the condition of the roof, um, where the, that occurred recently, we felt that it was at the time that it needed to be replaced. We used one of our on-call roofing contractors, was approved by mayor and council previously, to do this work.
Okay, members of council, you have before you a ratification of emergency roof replacement task order for Fire Station number 21, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is made and properly second, any questions or comments about members of council, Mr. Whitmore?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dana, I learned something very interesting today that I wasn't aware of. But are you able to explain to us about the thermoplastic roof membrane?
Yes, sir, TPO for short, is a thermoplastic polyphen roofing membrane. It's a one type of roofing system that you can put on a building. Um, so the roof at Fire Station 21 right now has a metal roof that, uh, over the recent rain events has failed. We have had an eye on this roof for, for a while and we've done repairs. So with this last failure, we, along with our contractor, thought better go to this thermoplastic roofing membrane, similar to what we have on the roof of City Hall. It is a, is a layered system where you apply a, a insulation, then a, a, a layer, a membrane, and then as designed or specified, you may add another layer to give it even more strength and reinforcement. This is a last, elastic, uh, rubberized, basically roofing system. It gives us about 20, 20 years, if we put in some good maintenance, to, to our roof and to the soundness of our building. Did that answer your question, sir?
Uh, that did perfectly, actually. And the other thing that I learned today is that, uh, we don't have to worry about screws, all the things that water ends up wearing out and causing problems. Because now with this, uh, TPO.
Yes, sir.
With this TPO, it's, it's the latest, well, I would say, a new technology, especially for metal roofs. We have some other buildings in the city that has metal roofs, is that correct?
We have, yes, we have a variety of roofs in the building. Uh, we do have some metal roofs at some of our buildings. And we have some shingle roofs and we have some TPO roofs. So you can make transitions, but you have to do it with a lot of work on design. We felt it best at Fire Station 21, to your point, Councilman, because of the issues that the metal roof was having with those screws and fasteners, that instead of trying to replace the metal roof, take all that off, we could go back with the TPO on top of that and lock in the roof and keep the building, what we call dried in.
Dry and tight.
Yes, sir.
It's just something I learned today, so I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, um, just for our citizens, what was the timeline for this roof prior to the emergency that happened? I know you have a timeline on everything in the city. So what was the timeline on this roof prior to the emergency?
So, um, as Mayor Council may recall, back in 2022 and 2023, we did our facility condition assessment. Looked at all of our buildings, we looked at this roof, it was given a fair grade at the time, which means we'll keep an eye on it, maintain it, and then in the years to come, you know, it has life left, but look, look at replacing it. After that time in 2023, um, it needed a, a repair, um, had an inspection done, another, another small repair due to, uh, drainage issue in 2024. We made those repairs, going into FY 2025, the roof was functional. It didn't have any issues or any observable problems at the time. So we just kept it on our radar for routine checks and maintenance. In the recent current events, it began to fail and not just with one or two leaks, but significantly enough that we felt that at this point, we weren't going back with another repair. We've made a couple repairs, we need to fix this problem and do it quickly due to what leaks and water intrusions we saw.
Right, thank you.
Um, do we have any issues with mold?
No, ma'am. One thing that we do, um, on my staff is priorities, life, safety, security, and then that comes to the building envelope, which includes the roof. Once we are aware of water intrusion, we respond, any tile that's wet, we're going to try to take that out. And of course, try to repair it if we can, call our contractors to repair it. But we leave the wet tile out so that we can identify the leak better and also to allow the ventilation and to things to dry and so that tile does not continue to get wet and continue to be a potential place for incubation of organic growth.
Thank you.
Just one more question, let me...
Who is her? Who is her?
So, the failure, the noticeable failure happened in May timeframe?
End of May, the beginning of June, that's when I, we contacted our roofing company to come out and, and they turned us over a proposal pretty quick.
Right, so that, that prompt you to actually get the vendor in that we needed to move forward on this?
Yes, sir.
To salvage what we can salvage and keep a 20-year warranty with this new process, is that correct? And, and when do you anticipate them completing this process?
This week, they were, we were scheduled to get started sooner, but as all things in 2025, with the global conditions we experienced, there was material delay. But they got started and, uh, with some rain issues, they should be, they're going to, scheduled to be completed this week with their work.
Any other members of council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries.
The next item is agreement with LinTech Services to relocate Rivertown Road overhead power infrastructure underground. This is to, the relocation to underground electrical infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $577,685.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and council.
Good evening.
Staff recommend that the mayor and council enter into an agreement with LinTech Services utility contractors to reinstall the existing Rivertown Road overhead infrastructure to underground, not to exceed 500 and... underground, not to exceed five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. LinTech Services have installed similar jobs for Georgia Power, Infinite Power, and Greystone Power. They are vetted and attested. This project's scope will remove all existing overhead primary wire, retire all existing primary power poles, and completely reinstall the primary wire underground. The city electric division has provided materials necessary to control costs. This underground project will positively reduce the frequency of mass and nuisance outages from trees, falling limbs, and wildlife in the Rivertown Road corridor. The electric division, city code enforcement, and Electric Cities of Georgia engineering have made a maximum effort to reduce these outages to our citizens. We have initiated the most aggressive vegetation control campaign in twenty years. We have enforced the removal of trees identified on private property with disease. We have installed the latest technology in overhead circuit protection available. The completion of this portion of the infrastructure project will align with plans to tie with the underground primary installation in the upcoming Park Road project, allowing a redundant loop feed from Highway seventy-four in the Ferndale subdivision area to Colony Trail, the Magnolias, Waterboy with Mary Erna Road, and Lake Joyce Lane. This connection to the Rivertown Road circuit will speed the restoration of power to our citizens that may occur in any future issues. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Let me bring an item to the floor. Members of council, you have before you an agreement with LinTech Services, LSC, to relocate Rivertown Road overhead power infrastructure underground. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And, Mr. Smallwood, you had a question, who is it?
Yes, uh, so, um, I know, um, this is a much-needed project. Uh, how long is a project like this? Like, if, if it was approved, how long would it take to locate everything underground?
Um, speaking with the contractors, we feel that if everything goes as planned, it would be November of this year.
From starting now until November?
Yes, that's what I was told.
Mr. Mr. Smallwood, would you hear? Cause I think he, actually, he's asking a question, I think, that probably be a little more definitive. You, you indicated in a previous meeting that we were going to start on Rivertown Road?
That, that is correct.
So I know the project, he, excuse me, sir. I know he says it's going to go to November, so if I had to ask you, if once there's the people that are, I'm sure my neighbors are sitting in here glad to hear. We're talking about the phase in this case in particular that deals with Rivertown Road, if you don't mind, it's, I'm just saying.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
A lot of complaints are coming from my folk, uh, my folks, excuse me. The people on my street and Magnolias, and so if you could-
Um, it, it, it will be from Malone. Right past the bridge on Malone. All the way to Waterboy and Mary Erna.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Now, is there any, what does power for them look like during the project? Interruptions, how, how does that work?
We're working on doing individual interruptions when we get to that point. First, we have to put the underground infrastructure in to give it points to go to the homes. As soon as we have the schedule for that, we will go ahead and put the new transformers in, which will be on the ground, at each location that will affect the homes, but they will have prior warning to when they will lose power.
Okay, one last one. What made it, I know we've had a lot of bad weather, so I know you can't determine the trees falling on the limbs, but I know that's not the case all the time. Is it just age that is causing this? What kind of is the driving force behind so many outages?
Well, the driving force that, uh, I've noticed since I've been here in my tenure of twenty years, uh, Councilman Smallwood, is that it, it has always been trees. Uh, it's been wildlife that gets into the line, trees, storms, high wind, and also there's, you know, vehicles that make contact, but we've been very fortunate this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could you add for council that there is somewhat of a seasonal surge in outages based on thunderstorms during certain times of the year? What has been your experience about the times of year when you see more frequent outages?
The, the worst time for the outage is, is of course, I call it as a lineman, would be storm season. And storm season usually relatively comes right after March and continues into September, October, where it has, starts to taper off towards winter. But then, of course, we have the possibility of ice, snow, and, uh, those type of weather, actions.
And I just wanted to add one other thing. Earlier, there was a question in the earlier discussion about whether or not, I think it was Councilman Heath, uh, Mayor Porter Tim Heath, whether the utilities and newer subdivisions are buried underground. That's a standard for us now. So anything that you as a council approve in newer subdivisions, all the infrastructure goes underground. And so if approved on this item, it would start to move that older infrastructure, Councilman Smallwood, to what we currently do with newer subdivisions, just to put it underground. So I know we have, uh, the Magnolias, for instance, their, their utilities are already underground. But, help me out here, Tom, but because they connect to the River, Rivertown Road corridor where it's still overhead, that's why they're impacted and those tree limbs fall. And so this, and you've mentioned this already, Councilman Smallwood, is a much-needed project that should have immediate impact once it's completed.
Yes.
Okay, now, do I think, uh, Mike, will you tell them, Ms. Hudson, there's a, oh, okay, she's on the screen, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Um, this is a, I, I'm glad to hear that this is happening because Rivertown Road is a source of outages all the time. We've been suffering with this for many, many years now, and I'm looking forward to this project, uh, moving forward. It seems to be, you know, I know that, uh, it was spoke about many times throughout the year of the storm season where you see the most frequency of outages, but I have to be honest in saying that we are seeing them year-round. There's no respect to time when the outages would occur. So I'm very, uh, eager to get this project done and completed and hope that each phase that is communicated, uh, very clearly with our residents, our customers, on any expected outages, uh, rolling out the phases of this project on the website, sending out communications as much as possible to give some ease, because right now, it just seems like the utility issues are constantly growing and it is beginning to be very frustrating. Uh, receiving calls from customers who work from home, I'm a work-based office, home, home office as well, and it can be very difficult to be productive with the outages that we have been occurring, especially this year. They're, they're more frequent this year. So, uh, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Any other members of council? Mr. Whitmore?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, again, I'm a firm believer in science, and I know we have some major global warming going on throughout the world, all right, which is part of our problem as well. But, uh, Tom, I've been on council long enough where I, I recall back, I think it's around twenty-sixteen, when, uh, we were awarded, uh, to start some underground wiring, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I understand what the cost of this is, is, uh, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand plus dollars, all right, which is needed, it's going to be money well spent. But how much did you accomplish during the twenty-sixteen period? And how many employees did you have that tackled this problem?
I, I believe the, uh, the area that you're speaking of, which is the only one that I can recall, would be in the Bohannon Road-Creekwood area, where we ran, uh, everything underground for the circuits for when Google was being built, so that we could make a loop feed through there and bury it underground. As a matter of fact, I think in twenty-seventeen, after that project, we've got the most improved, uh, infrastructure project in ECG.
We did.
And we had ten men. We had ten men, and one of them that we borrowed was from Water Department to help us bury the wire. And, uh, it took approximately eight and a half months before we were finished.
Now, it was eight and a half months plus having to do other things as they come up within the city?
Oh, yes, sir. We had to keep the power on also.
Okay. Which, which is great, and I, I commend you guys for what you did. So now I'm, I'm, I'm going somewhere with this, so how many employees you have now in electrical?
We have, just give me one moment, because I have to count their faces in my hand. We have five.
We have five. Um, I'm sorry, I'm slowing, man. Two thousand sixteen, ten employees. Twenty-twenty-five, five employees. Is that right?
At, currently, yes.
Currently. So, let me ask you another question, because I also sit here and I'm, I'm very attentive in hearing about major projects from electrical, water sewer, and I'm not hearing a lot of that. I wish your, your manager was here, I would be asking him some direct questions. But can you talk to me about some future projects? But before you go there, you mentioned loop feed, and I understand loop feed. So even with the current project that you're going to undertake for Rivertown Road, is that going to be also a loop feed so that when we do have disruptions, you can isolate, redirect, so on and so forth?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So my other question is because I, you may know this, uh, because of my previous work history in dealing with mechanical and electrical. So, explain to me how going underground, and even, I think Ms. Ragland even spoke of some allergies in her area, how would this loop feed even assist, for example, going down to, what is that, uh, what road is that?
Red Fox, Sir Charles.
Red Fox, Sir Charles area. One of our older areas, so if it's, we're not there yet, but I'm just, I'm bringing this up for a reason.
Right. Fortunately, if something would happen in between the infrastructure towards that area, if it were before the top of Rivertown Road towards the middle of town, if anything would have happened there to knock the power out, this loop feed could actually tie to that circuit and re-feed until those repairs were made by switching.
So you, you're minimizing loss of power?
Yes, in a totally different area of town.
Okay. Now, and again, I'm, I'm dealing with, uh, Ms. Ragland's area, I know that's one of the older, uh, areas if, within the city of Fairburn. So is it plans to, and I'm assuming that they're above ground there as well, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so again, I know, because as a project manager, in your case, a project supervisor, management of people in the electrical department, you also have a vision of other areas that you need to look at running wires underground to improve so that we all have a negligible effect of loss of power throughout the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's, it's the vision to eventually, as it becomes available through funds, to put our older neighborhoods underground and do the same improvement.
Okay. Uh, I think I have one other. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other members of council? Has a question? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll go to the city council comments. I'll start with Mr. Whitmore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, just let me say that, uh, I had the opportunity of going out to Ray White's house. Uh, his wife passed a week ago on Sunday, and he had the services on Wednesday, and I learned so much about a lady that I didn't know, that I wish I would have known. A pillar of the community, a servant to the community. She was always giving out cards, food, whatever she can do when she found someone in need. So to raid his three daughters, five grands, and three great grands, uh, I solicit continuous prayers. I know you lost a, a very close loved one. She will be missed, and it was proven that what she meant to the city of Fairburn. Secondly, secondly, I'd like to talk about the Fairburn Fire Department. I tell you, I, I, I let everybody know, I'm a firm believer in our first responders. Well, we had one of our commissioners that was here downtown Fairburn, and she witnessed a two-year-old that was accidentally locked in the car. Couldn't get the kid to even come and unlock the car. It was super hot out there, the kid was fading, all right? But we had other stand-byers, bystanders, that made the situation worse and had no solution. But we had our firefighters coming out of Food Depot and, uh, Ms., uh, Commissioner, boy, I can't think of her name right now. But anyway, what she ended up doing is calling the firefighter over. They assessed the situation and quickly broke the window, got the child out, and did not have to go to the hospital. I just want to thank our firefighters, because y'all do a great job. Last comment about stormwater. If you see anybody that's pushing grass down the stormwater drain, please call police and get them over there so our citizens do not have to pay. I saw it today, I called PD, we addressed it, and, uh, please, if you see it, do it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Hudson? We didn't lose her, did we? Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. I want to say to our residents, I've received so many phone calls from you about your concerns related to the customer service experience that you had with utilities and some of the things that you are concerned about. I want you to be clear that I, as a resident, I am experiencing those similar issues, and I, with you, will stand to get to the solution that we need to rid ourselves of this billing issue. I want to, uh, call to the attention to our administration to really pay attention to some of the concerns that are being brought forth by our constituents and even council members. It's important that you adhere to the advocacy that council members are bringing forth for residents, and that when there is a clear, uh, identity of professional practice that is causing these issues, that it be addressed. Everything rises and falls with leadership, and with that, we have to be accountable in making the adjustments that are necessary to improve the quality of our services here. Finally, back-to-school backpack giveaway, I will be posting that second round, uh, and you should, uh, receive that information before August. Uh, I want to thank each and every one of our citizens, our staff, as working hard to, uh, serve our citizens in the city of Fairburn. And my final statement and quote is this, who much is given, much is required. We have a responsibility to serve the citizens of this city with quality and not mediocrity, and I want to see improvement in customer service. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Smallwood?
No comments.
All right. Ms. Hattie Porter Jones?
No comments.
Uh, Mr. Heath?
No comment.
Uh, Ms. Davis?
No comments at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, all the comments I had, I want to just, again, thank our utility department for a much-needed service, and I want to thank our staff, uh, in this case, uh, utility staff as well as executive staff that, that spent a lot of time, in this case, with the request for proposal process, ensuring that this got pushed faster than it normally would. And so again, that, uh, me having been in, in that space, understand that that's, that wasn't, that's, is not a quick, that's, I want to publicly thank, uh- was, this is not a quick, as I want to publicly thank Ms., uh, she, excuse me, both the city administrator and the deputy, as well as the utility management staff that played a major role in getting that before council sooner, sooner than normal. If I'm correct, I want to make sure, uh, young lady Lisa and our court services had a loss in her family, and I want to just thank the, uh, the city of Fairburn staff that went and supported her loss of her husband in, in, in this, uh, during this period of her life. Want to just say personally again to Lisa, I want to just say, uh, our prayers are with you, and on behalf of mayor and council, we give you support for your family. So with that being said, uh, and I entertain a motion to go in executive session, uh, for both a real, if I'm, uh, real estate litigation and, and personnel. Okay. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? At this time, we're going to, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming into meeting tonight.